Mrs. O, are you there?
Yep.
Okay. Are we just missing Director Gil Martin and Director Holmes? Is that what you're seeing? Oh, there's Director Gil Martin. I think maybe just Director Holmes.
I think that's the only person we're missing.
Right, Director Holmes. Okay, let's just give him a second. I know I was having a hard time getting in as well.
I don't see Mr. McAndrew.
I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Thank you. Okay.
Director Holmes?
I see him here. He's here.
Ian?
Okay. I don't see him, but I see he's signed in. But I can't, I don't see him, so I don't know if he can hear me.
I see him here.
Oh, there you are. I see him.
Okay, great. So I think we've got everybody here then, right? So we can go ahead and call to order our work session for Monday, February 28th, 2022. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Sorry about that.
Mrs. O, would you take roll call?
Mrs. Kedzik?
Present.
Mrs. Cleary?
Sorry, present.
Ms. Cruz?
Present.
Ms. Fox?
Present.
Ms. Gil Martin?
Present.
Mr. Holmes?
Present.
Ms. Hume?
Present.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mrs. Johnny?
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go right, right to our agenda under Budget and Finance. Director Gil Martin?
Okay. Under the consent agenda, we will have motions to approve the bill list, the exception bill list and bill lists, capital improvement bill list, delinquent tax report, treasurer's report, repository sales, budget transfers, if any, and disposal of assets in, if any. Mr. Laffey, I think everything is straightforward there, but is there anything we need to touch on?
No, those, those items, Director Gil Martin, are our standard monthly agenda items for the Budget and Finance Department.
Very good, thank you. We will now have a discussion review and motion to accept the 2020 audited financial statements and single audit. We have Carl Hogan with us this evening. Mr. Hogan? I believe you're muted.
All right.
If I can just introduce Carl. Carl is the partner for BBD LLP, which is our independent auditors. They've been on with the district now for the past two years to do, to complete our 2019 and this, the 2020 audit. Thank you.
Thanks, Pat. Everybody, can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, cool. So I'm going to give a brief synopsis. We're just wrapping up the 2020 audit and it'll be, the game plan here is for the audit to be on the agenda for next Monday night's meeting for full approval. I know Pat, I mean, the numbers you're going to see here tonight are what Pat had been reporting to everybody in the board, you know, at the conclusion of 2020. And I know he had reported the results of the audit and where he stood related to your fund balance, et cetera. So this is just kind of putting a ribbon on things and wrapping things up for 2020. I'm just going to go over some of the highlights in the financial statements. The first being the independent auditor's report, standard independent auditor's report outlining management's responsibilities, our responsibilities. You know, there, we have one little change in accounting principle for the current year. As exciting as it gets related to Gatsby, we implemented a new Gatsby during the current year related to your fiduciary activities. But the most important thing here is this opinion paragraph right here, basically stating that the numbers that were presented to us by management for the year ended, December 31st, 2020, were fairly presented. There is another page to the audit opinion, particularly outlining what, what type of responsibility we're taking for the different sections of the audit report, being the required supplementary information and the other or supplemental information. And, you know, what kind of opinion you received on those or what kind of opinion were given on those types of additional information within the report. All right. So I'm going to skip to the back of the audit report. I'm going to make this quick to get to the most important part of the audit, I think, and that's the results for the year ended December 31st, 2020. This is your budgetary comparison schedule for your general fund. This outlines what your original budget, your final budget and your actual numbers and how you came in. The first thing I like to highlight is that, you know, when you put your budget together for 2020, this is right before COVID-19 and a lot of the things that you anticipated to happen in 2020, as we all know, didn't come to fruition, not only for the conclusion of the school year for 2020, but also for a good portion of the 20, you know, from September of 2020. I guess through March of 2021, you were kind of operating in virtual mode. So a lot of the things that you anticipated to happen, especially as it pertains to expenditures, didn't really happen, kind of went in a good way in terms of the expenditures though, because what was budgeted and what actually happened. So just to kind of go over some of the results for 2020 here. Local source revenue and state source revenues were pretty much right on budget, especially the state source revenues. You know what the state's going to give you on an annual basis. So that's always going to come in within, you know, a very good budget range there. But the federal source revenue, you typically know what you're going to receive there as well. But during the current year, right towards the end or going into the 2021 school year, you received additional funding through the CARES Act, which was used. So that's accounting for the increase in the federal source revenues as it pertains to your budget. So when we go, what you're going to see in 2021, you're able to plan for that a little bit more, knowing what kind of funding we're going to get through, not only the CARES Act, but also through the SRF funding, one, two, and I guess three will be hitting soon as well. So overall, when you look at your revenues and you look at them as a comparative budget, I mean, pretty much right on budget, less than 1%. And when we look at $165 million budget, that, that came in right on, right on budget. But here's where things, the expenditures because of COVID-19. I'm sure everybody remembers March 2020. You know, you went to the virtual mode and you were in virtual mode all the way through the end of the year. As a result, a lot of expenditures that you anticipated to have related to being in-person learning didn't happen and resulted in savings across all the various functions. So some of them make sense because you weren't paying your transportation carrier. Buildings were closed, et cetera. So overall, your budgeted expenditures were actually $10.5 million under budget compared to your $165 million budget. And it's all being driven by, you know, not incurring expenditures related to in-person learning and not being open, you know, right at the conclusion of the 2020, June 30th, 2020 school year. So when you put your budget together, you budgeted to have a balanced budget. And then you actually added to your fund balance $10 million, all being driven by the expenditures there. So at the end of the day, when you look at it, your fund balance was at 1.4, relatively low. So, you know, even though your budget didn't go as planned, it would turn out to be a positive financial situation for the district, actually adding money and giving themselves a little bit of a fund balance. So if you remember, the district was in a deficit situation, got itself into the black during 2019 now. And at the end of December 31st, 2020, you have a fund balance and, you know, almost at the 8% that's allowed by PDE at year end. So any questions, concerns? Like I said, this, I know Pat's reported this to everybody related to this. Just a couple other pages I'm going to go over real quick. This is the same information I just presented to you for the general fund. But during the current year, we had some, a lot of audited activity that we need to audit related to the Capital Projects Fund and the Debt Service Fund. During 2000, right at the conclusion of 2020, debt was issued for new capital projects. Here's that money coming in and was available to be spent, which I'm sure, sure, a lot of it has been spent during 2021. And then also in 2020, the 2014 general obligation notes were re marketed. So the district was able to take advantage of, you know, a favorable interest rate environment to be able to remarket the 2014 general obligation notes. Then here, this is your balance sheet. Balance sheet is basically, and your assets over your, your current assets of your current liabilities and the excess of the assets of the liabilities being your fund balance. So once again, here's your total assets, most of your assets being in the form of cash and amounts due from the state at year end. Liabilities at year end primarily consist of accounts payable and amounts that are due for accrued salaries to be paid out over the summer. And then the excess of those assets over the liabilities being $12 million we just spoke about. There's the $33 million of the Capital Projects Fund for the bonds coming in at the end of the year. And then the $1.3 million that's set aside for a future debt service within the debt service fund. I know this is a really long document and when you get it next week, you know, I don't, I mean, I don't think many people expect everybody to read the whole document. But what I really encourage everybody to do is to read pages. I believe it's pages three through 14 or so. I think Pat's done a really good job in doing management's discussion and analysis. So a lot of the things I just touched base on, you know, just here, I think Pat's put in a really good narrative form within management's discussion and analysis to kind of talk about, you know, you know, what happened during the year in a short, concise manner. In particular, I think the stuff that's really good that Pat's put together here, starting here on page number nine, talking about the governmental funds and kind of talk about your tax revenues, your expenditure, the comparison year over year. And more importantly is the information he discloses on the general fund budget and the reason for those budget variances that we just went over in the, in the back of the audit report. And he puts it in pretty good detail right here. Kind of, you know, lays it out, but not in a real long form, but just, you know, really short, concise, et cetera. Does anybody have any questions so far? No, okay. So finally, we went over what kind of audit report you had. We went over where you stood financially at the end of the year. And then finally, I just want to talk about the summary of the auditor's results. We expressed an unmodified audit opinion. We didn't have anything that we would consider a significant deficiency or material weakness within your internal controls. We didn't have any kind of material adjustments that would need to be reported to the Board of Directors. And also this section talks about the audit, the special audit we do of your, of your federal awards and being this current year where the major federal awards were Title I and your child nutrition cluster. And I would assume going moving forward, in this upcoming year, your SRF funds will be the major program. So that's all I really have to add. You know, Pat and I and my team have been working on improving the financial reporting of the school district. We've implemented some new reporting related to your other post-employment benefits, et cetera. So we're going to continue to work on that. And, you know, can you continue to work enhancing the, the financial statements?
Yeah, if, if I can add to that, Carl, thank you. And Director Gil Martin, if you don't mind, working with BBD and Carl, we, the district has, at, at this point, has, is now fully utilizing our fund accounting software for all funds that are, that are reported in, in the financial statements. That, that was a task that we were able to complete in the, in the prior audit. And Carl, if, if, if you don't mind, you know, you, you mentioned the, the fund balance. We show it as, as unassigned. It, you know, can we talk about the, the other types of, of assignments committed? Or I'm sorry, the other type of fund balance committed and assigned?
Yeah.
And as we prepare for the 2021 audit report, what would, what actions would the district need to take if we wanted to commit or assign some, some of our fund balance in the next year?
So, so like in the past, Scranton has never been in a position where they've been able to. So PDE only allows you to have 8% of unassigned fund balance, 8% of next year's expenditure budget in unassigned fund balance. So it's never been an issue at Scranton because they haven't had that. But now it looks like you're going to be in a position to be there and for 2021. So what, what you need to do is if you're in excess of that 8% of your next year's expenditure budget of your unassigned fund balance, we have to, anything above that 8%, you need to either, what we call, commit or assign fund balance. And here's within your notes to your financial statements and definitions of commitments, assignments, right here. So a commitment is where the board takes formal action to, or takes form, takes formal action to be able to commit fund balance, you know, for one-time expenditures. So like something for capital projects, for retirement rate stabilization amounts because of the increase in the Peasers, technology purchases, but only for one time, but only for one time, non-recurring expenditures. And then there's also assignment. Assignment is when the district's management is given the ability to assign fund balance without it going through any kind of formal board approval. Most of my school districts, the school board likes to do the commitment because they like to do that formal board approval related to the commitment. You know, some, some allow their management to make that decision with the assignments. But now that you're going to be probably over that 8% for 2021, the board needs to start talking to Pat and talking to him. What do we want to actually commit those funds for or have Pat assign those funds? That are in excess of that 8% of the next year's expenditure budget.
And Carl, thank you. This is something that the board and I have talked about and our superintendent and recovery officer about committing or assigning some of these funds. And as you mentioned, the capital project fund. So, you know, we, we will look to do that in the upcoming year.
So it's all positive news that you're, you know, have a fun balance to be able to do that now.
Yeah. Thank you.
Add, do you want me to add anything else?
I had one question, something I noticed go by on the page where you had the numbered findings. I thought I saw something that said one significant deficiency. And I'm just wondering if that was a typo or if you could expand on it.
I think that was related to, was that related to last year, Pat?
I think it's last year.
I'll, I'll get that fixed.
Okay.
And it might have already been fixed, but this is just, this is back from February 7th.
So. Okay.
This is, it's been updated, but I didn't want to present yet, so.
Okay. Thank you.
There's a, there's a, there's something called the data collection form. I, I believe it was the, I think that's what it was related to.
It was, that is it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Yep, you do.
Okay, we'll move on to a motion to approve and discussion on sale and disposal procedure for assets. For assets in the library at Scranton High School. Mr. Laffey, do you want to?
Uh, yes, uh, yes, thank you, Dr. Gomar. Um, as we are approving or. As the board has approved the the STEM program for Scranton High School um to be located in in the library, um, there are um. A lot of obviously materials, furniture, li- library books and and other items that will need to be. Ri- removed from that area to allow for the program to uh move into. We've started a process, um, Ms. Miller has has started a a nice process to. Hopefully, you know, transition some of these materials out of that space. So we we just wanted to give you an update on where we are with that. So the process started with a complete inventory of approximately eighteen thousand five hundred books. Um, that were located in 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 the in the library and the furniture, which which includes bookshelves, student desk catalog folders, et cetera. Um, uh, Ms. Miller uh created a schedule uh that was prepared for the books and furniture to offer to schools within the district. Um, that's part of our policy, policy seven oh six point one for for dispo- disposal of district property. Is that we need to first look to reallocate it uh throughout the uh throughout the district if we can, so. Starting with the high schools, um. We've already seen a list, I I believe we're over approximately over nineteen hundred books have already been reallocated. And I don't think the intermediate schools have even started this process yet. But um, so we are in the process currently of trying to reallocate these resources, these materials, this furniture. Throughout the school district, and I believe the timeline for that process to conclude is on March tenth. Um, the the next step in our policy for the disposal of district property. Is to solicit for the sale of items, okay? Um, it, once, once we have whatever remaining materials are there or or furniture is there. We we will begin to solicit for the sale of those. After that, anything that remains unsaled, uh, unsaled, unsold, excuse me, uh, can be offered for donation. Uh, there's been discussions on whether uh possibly offering it to donation for students and and. I believe the board would would most likely support that. Um, and then once any items remain uh either not not reallocated, sold. Or donated, we would then have to go to the complete dis- disposal process. So that is all in the works right now as as we speak. Um, but what we will be bringing to you uh at the next meeting is a list of all the materials that we want to um. Authorized to begin that process for.
Thank you, Pat. Think that makes a lot of sense. Does anybody have any questions? Just, I just wanted to make one point, I'm sure that we've looked to all the other schools to see if there's any materials or anything that. Anybody needs in their classrooms or can use in any other areas before we were to to donate or sell anything. I'm sure we've covered that.
Yeah, President Yanni, that's actually the process that that we're we're in now, where um, starting with the high schools and working down. Um, principals and teachers have been um. Reviewing that inventory of eighteen thousand items and uh basically assigning their name to it of of what they'd like to uh transfer to their school.
Thank you.
Now, we've already probably touched upon this, but I'm going to ask, there is absolutely nowhere in that building to store those books. I have a problem. Getting rid of those books forever because once they're gone, they're gone. And I just find that that's that's problematic. I understand technology, I get it, but books, we should not be getting rid of books, physically removing books. We should find a way to make this work.
Well, I think we've just described the process in that we are reallocating these throughout the district.
I understand that, but I want to see if we can make sure we keep them in the school that they're in. I understand the process, but I want to see if there's no possible way to keep them in the school that they're in. For the kids that are in that school and that will attend that school in the future.
I think what, I think what we could do is once we're done with the process, if if the board would like us to do this, I'm just listening. Um, before we sell anything, um, we could look to see if there's a place that we could store. I mean, every, every, through this process, every school uh is having an opportunity to go through and and you choose what they want. I understand what you're saying, Director Holmes, you don't want us to get rid of anything for future. Um, so what we could do is see what we have at the end before we sell um and report back. Uh, I'm not really sure, you know, we already have a storage problem as it is. Um, but, you know, again, if that's, if that's something the board wants us to look at, we can do that.
Ms. Miller, didn't you um say when we met on Wednesday that, like, right now, the majority of the books are being redistributed within Scranton High School? For instance, like the art department is took all of the art books and they're putting them in their respective classrooms, including. Some of the bookcases in order to store them?
Yeah, yes, that is correct, that I believe almost twenty five hundred of the three thousand books so far that have been claimed. Are claimed within Scranton High School. Um, and as I've noticed claims, for instance, uh, one of the history teachers. Uh, made a couple of claims, I then found additional books within that topic and made suggestions and asked even if. You know, these are the same books in that type of category, would you be interested in these? And so a lot of them have been taken. Um, those that aren't even on the list yet as well.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms. Miller, are we're with regards to how many schools are left with regards to um having the opportunity to go to Scranton High School?
So far, um, only Scranton High and West Side have had that, or West High School have had that chance. It just opened today for the three intermediate schools and will stay open this week for that. And then next week, open for elementary schools. That schedule is also in the STEM folder that uh Ginny had shared with the board.
Okay. So we'll have a better idea of what's left over by by um, within two weeks.
Yeah, the end of next week, I believe.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Laffey will have discussion motion to approve the Forecast Five agreement. You tell us about that, please?
Uh, yes, uh, so, uh, thank you, Director Gomar. Um, so Forecast Five is a software program that. I think you've heard me this uh talk about before in in the past. This is a program that is utilized by uh, I I believe many school districts in i- in the in the state of Pennsylvania. Um, I don't know the exact count, but i- it is a a very unique product. Um, it offers, you you know, forecasting um abilities, multi-year budget projections. Uh, historical budget comparisons, all, all within, within that software system itself. So instead of having to create that, um, you know, with, you know, it r- reports in Excel documents. This system will store all of our budget data, it it will be uploaded, it will pro- provide us with some great comparative tools. To kind of see where we're heading, you know, like, if you want to know what the impact of, let's just say, a uh tax increases. You know what I mean? And you it would forecast that out over the next five years or so. You know, you can adjust your assessments to determine, you know, um, what's the trends uh that that you're seeing there. It's. It's it's a really um unique budgeting tool and I think forecasting tool that um, that I've had my eye on for quite some time. Um, it also includes a a section called uh Five Casts. It it allows you to create various informational dash- that dashboards. Um, one of the examples I showed the board was an S R dashboard, so. Anything coded to um, the funding source for S R is automatically compiled and is presented in this very. Easy to understand, easy to read illustrative um summary to show, you know, how you're investing those those dollars, those resources. Part of the, part of the program also is an area called Five Site. Um, you you know, it 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 allows you to compare uh your your data, meaning for Scranton School District. With that is with data from other school districts throughout the state. It it uploads A A F R information um from all different school di- districts and you can. You know, you know, you might not want to compare us against the statewide, but you can narrow it down to a smaller um. To a smaller area, to more people i- of of your peers, just districts of of your size, compare your salary and staffing levels. Again, as I said, historical budget versus actual reports, it it even has um some educational pieces of it, comparing your P S S A. Assessment versus your peer, your peer districts, it helps with enrollment trending. Um, again, as I mentioned, tax rates and assessments, um, you know, it's, I I think it's a very valuable tool. It's something that, again, as I said, I had my eye on. Um, we did budget for it, a- as you recall, we budgeted, if you remember, the final budget on November thirtieth included fifty five thousand dollars. For various um, new software programs for for the district, a part of it was for the business office and uh. Uh, this is the um, uh. This is where I would like to uh, uh, with your permission, uh, enter in into an agreement with Forecast Five. It's a prorated agreement for the year twenty twenty two at an annual cost of twenty one thousand sixty four dollars.
What is the annual cost going forward, Pat? Not prorated. But where are we starting, like, are we starting at March or April or?
Yeah, starting in March.
Okay. So that's about three quarters of a year then.
Yep, yeah, so I mean, if you annualize it out, i- if if um, if you felt it was a useful tool. Uh, and you wanted to continue with it, it'd probably be about twenty eight thousand dollars annually.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Again, it's fully budgeted for.
Does anybody have any questions? Very good, it certainly sounds like a very valuable tool from a lot of angles. Assessing where we stand, planning for the future, and and also there seems to be a transparency piece to this as well, so that's great. Thank you. Uh, discussion, possible motion for real estate assessment approvals.
Uh, at the moment, uh, we don't have any to discuss, uh, but again, this is one of our, um, we we wanted, if something were to arise during this week. Um, we would be able to provide information to the board in the weekly packet uh for a vote on Monday night.
Okay, thank you. Uh, then we will have a motion to, I'm I'm sorry, uh, we have a discussion on contracts update.
So this, this is an item that I want to add to our standard monthly meeting. Um, per policy, it it's actually, we're not going to ask, ask you to vote on on anything for this, it's just. It's just me providing an update to the board. Um, per our policy six ten, the board grants um, board secretary or the business manager acting as the purchase agent. The authority to purchase supplies and work contracts in amount and manner designated by law. Um, that the awards and contracts must be reported at the next public meeting and cannot exceed exceed state bidding thresholds. It must not exceed twelve, twelve months. So um, what I wanted to make you aware of is that. The operations department, uh, again, as I noted, we budgeted fifty five thousand dollars for various software programs. Uh, Mr. Rucker has identified a program called Monday dot com. It comes with an annual amount of eighty two hundred dollars, eight thousand two hundred and eight dollars. Uh, Monday dot com is a work operating system that allows like organizations or teams. To run and manage various products and workflows in a centralized application. So, you know, the way I visualize it is, you know, he creates or we create a project, you know, whether it be. Um, you know, I I can't think of an of of an example, and all the communications and updates occur within this module. I think it it will be uh. Uh, it'll help us, I think, manage a lot of the products that we have going on, I think, a- as you're aware. Um, you know, not just even uh operationally with it with the capital projects, but. Various initiatives that we're hoping to uh to bring back to the district, it will allow us, the central administration. You know, to keep track of these and to make sure that we stay, that we stay on target. Um, the with, within the eighty two hundred dollar cost, uh, the business office will have some access to it as as well. Um, again, this, this is, a- as I noted before, this was also bu- systems like these were also budgeted for in 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 two thousand twenty two.
Thank you. I, I think it's important to be putting these systems into place. And I think as we continue these conversations and these things come forward, the question I would have is, how are we assessing them? And making sure that they're meeting our expectations annually before we go forward again to extend a a contract. Or enter into a new a agreement down the road. I think that's just something, you know, e- each department needs to keep in mind. So that the board can understand how this has performed. And one question, I I feel like I saw a note about this maybe in our packet. Uh, are we being cognizant of the fact that these systems need to speak to one another? And that may not be so much a question for you, Pat, yes?
Yes, that is something that's very important um as we move forward. To answer your question, yes.
Thank you. Any questions, anybody else? We'll have a motion to approve the single tax office audit. Back to you, Mr. Laffey.
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, as Mr. Hogan just presented uh the the financial statements for the Scranton School District. Um, uh, Robert Rossi uh and company was the um. Independent auditors for the single tax office audit, so it's separate from the single audit. You may have heard Mr. Hogan say single audit. That's an audit of our federal awards, this is the single tax um audit. Uh, it was, uh, they were awarded the contract for the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty audit of the single tax office. Um, there, so the audits are complete and I will be sending them home um. In the board's packet, uh, as you uh asked Mr. Hogan, was there, was there any findings? There was one finding um with, from uh Mr. Rossi. Uh, the finding is, uh, I'll summarize, is that the single ta- tax office maintains a master bank account. Um, that accrues all the interest and fee and assumes all fees for the three taxing bodies. They they then have three separate accounts that disbursements are made from. Um, according to state statute, the interest be- um belongs to the municipal corporation that the principal of funds be- be- belong. Uh, they, they noted that a proper separation will facilitate a more accurate accounting of of the tax collections. And the recommendation of the auditor is that procedures shall be put in place uh to separate those tax collections, I think, in a more. Frequent basis, um, so that the out, so that any interest and fees accrue in the subaccounts, not in the master account. Uh, that's something that I that I will, um, I think along with uh, uh, Controller John Murray from the city of Scranton, we will work with the um. With the single tax office to hopefully put procedures in place to eliminate this finding moving forward.
Great, thank you very much. And finally, we have a discussion, possible motion. On the business privilege mercantile tax payroll prep tax conversion. Uh, Mr. Laffey, I think you have some information based on the list that we've defined coming out of our last budget and finance committee meeting.
Uh, yes, one of one of the items that came up was, I think, where where was the city in their process and um. Where was the single tax office in terms of issuing the business privilege mercantile bills? I spoke to the city last week, um, they are, they are holding weekly meetings with Burckheimer. Um, again, a- a- as noted at the um, budget and finance committee meeting, I believe legislation will be presented on March first for. For the Burckheimer agreement. Um, the weekly meetings at at this point have focused around the, the taxpayer instructions. And the tax bills themselves. Um, they have, they're working on the template document and. According to city representatives, I believe their target is about two weeks from now to have those bills issued, I think, in the first couple of weeks of March. Um, I reached out to the single tax office for the status of the business privilege mercantile uh invoices or bills. They went out at the end of, I believe, early last week. Uh, they issued about five thousand um BP Merk uh tax bills. And payments have already started to to come in. The, the amount is, I don't, I don't think it's a a large amount at at this point, but payments have started to come in and. And they did note that um, some of the payments needed to be re- returned due to some taxpayer confusion, I guess. People utilizing the old tax bill and continuing to pay the city of Scranton's business privilege mercantile share. Um, on that form as well.
Pat, Pat, did, did they say like when we get the refund, like, is in situations like that, how long it would take for somebody to get a refund?
No, they didn't, uh, Director McCandon, I can follow up with them tomorrow and ask them that question, but um, the timeline for refunds, I I did not get a uh. I did not ask that question, I apologize, I can find that out for you though.
Okay, thank you.
So ju- just so I understand, Mr. Laffey, they've, they've confirmed that the business privilege um mercantile tax bills have gone out. And they've already received payments.
Yes.
Okay. So if if we were to consider um, even trying to make this change as we discussed at our budget and finance committee meeting. Um, wh- wh- what kind of headaches would we be looking at in in that case?
Well, I I think as I noted at the budget and finance committee, we we'd have to come up with some type of refund process, for sure. What that looks like, I I'm not exactly sure a- at the moment. What that looks like, I I'm not exactly sure at at the moment. That's something I'd have to work with the single tax officer.
And I. I am fearful that that, as we discussed last week, layers a a a great deal of confusion over. An already confused process. You know, we've noted this evening, people print the old BPM return and. Pay as they always have. We still have the education piece coming out from the city. Mr. Audi, when we last spoke, you were going to look into any potential legal parameters. Around a timing of potentially rescinding attacks, or I don't think you felt as though there was really anything. That would clearly prohibit us from that, but I am interested to know if you came across anything.
I I have not, um, Director Gilmar, I I have not been able to find any law. That specifically addresses that issue.
But there is still the concern of having already levied one, rescinding it and levying a second tax just broadly. That's a concern.
There's definitely that concern, and then there's the color of that concern, because, you know, it doesn't necessarily have to have been litigated. Uh, it could be a novel issue that someone could raise and say. We believe you violated the law by having these two implemented in the same year at the same time. Especially having already have the bills sent out and people having paid them.
I I mean, I I am of the opinion that, at this point, with that action having been taken, with returns having come in. I would not want to see the the single tax office thrown into turmoil because of of a change in our plans. You know, there's, there's already a a great deal of work I think we can be doing together with the single tax office, with increased communication, with. Really redoubling efforts on um real estate tax collections, the delinquencies we've discussed. I think there is. Plenty of work to be done in a positive direction, rather than trying to undo something that. We are still able to consider going forward. Um, you know, if the bills were not out and collections had not begun. This might be a very different conversation, but I feel as though so many of the things that we were kind of holding our breath, thinking, well. If it works out this way or that way, then maybe have. The, as we've said, the horse is out of the barn, and I think someone said galloping away quickly. So, you know, I. I I am of the opinion that, while I am very much in favor of this tax and do wish we were doing it hand in hand with the city, I. I simply don't want to confuse an already complex situation. Open us up to any more potential litigation than may already exist in just. The normal conversion and, you know, not really be able to. Assess the the impact of this. You know, I'm I'm hoping this is going to be a very positive change for the district. And I don't want to see that muddied by doing it in a confused way.
Director Gilmar, and I I couldn't have said that any better. Um, in in addition to all of that, my concern is for the cash flow. Um, of what could happen with the cash flow with the district if if we were to try to make this change. For twenty twenty-three. So I I think what I'm hearing, i- if I'm correct, is that we will not be putting a motion. On our agenda coming up on March seventh to make this change, but I think that this board is very open. Um, to considering this for twenty twenty-three, uh, and again, we would need a vote to do that. But I think we can certainly continue to to work on this process and work with Mr. Laffey and direct Mr. Laffey to. Um, include that in our preliminary budget for twenty twenty-three as we as we move forward. Is there anybody else that wants to make any other points to that?
Um, how soon could we vote on that for next year?
We are, Mr. Laffey, correct me if I'm wrong, but we're thinking we could even do that prior to June thirtieth. So, you know, with.
I believe so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
The act one timeline, Director McCandon, is very clear that. In and around July fifteenth, again, I I I'd have to refresh my dates, but um, I I would, or the district would need to make a proposed preliminary budget. Available for public inspection with adoption of a preliminary budget the first week in August. It doesn't have any parameters about how early you can actually do that. So I I would think it's something that we could possibly do. Before June thirtieth, and I will review that with Solicitor Audi as well.
And I I would certainly. Encourage us to continue these conversations. You know, Mr. Laffey will continue his work with the city. I think we want to continue our communication with the single tax office and. Look for ways that we might be able to increase our revenues to help mitigate any potential shortfall and. You know, keep our our open line of communication with Senator Flynn, with other state representatives. And just keep them abreast of our process and our progress here and, you know, hope that. The steps we are taking now will will be enough to keep that funding in our coffers.
So I I do have a question about this tax. I mean, if. It sounds like we're planning on holding off for a little bit. I'm not opposed to it, but I know the referendum that that was done, it was November twenty nineteen. So if we plan on moving forward, I would like to know, um, you know, obviously, we don't have this information right now, but maybe it's something we could. Look into that if the voters of Scranton, if they still feel the same after a global pandemic. I know many people, they've had their financial situations change over the course of the last few years. So, being that this referendum can have, um, you know, businesses have said it can have a financial burden on them. I would just like to know if they feel the same way as they did in twenty nineteen when seventy, seventy-two percent were in favor of this tax. And with that being said, um, if perhaps we can get a general idea of the businesses that would actually. Be impacted by this tax. How many businesses would leave Scranton? How many would have to, like, close their doors? So, like I said, I I'm I'm not opposed, but I just want to know, like, almost like what we're dealing with, like, to this extent. So and and this kind of gives us more time maybe to get that sort of information.
I I think, Director Chesek, you will find that a great deal of that information is compiled in. The drive is available with our League of Women Voters and Scranton Tomorrow Forum. With the presentations through the Tax Policy Working Group and the Chamber of Commerce, uh, the PowerPoint presentation that the city. Presented to this board, you know, certainly, please take a look through that information, and if you have any specific questions. You know, we're happy to address those. I I think in terms. Of the referendum, I don't know that that is something that. You, you know, Mr. Audi, I would look to you for that. I don't know that. Not being required to do that, I I don't know that that is a step. That we would take. I think, you know, we we've created a lot of opportunities for people to come forward and. Voice their concerns, ask their questions about this, and, you know, I think now, a- as we said with the referendum. This wasn't thumbs up or thumbs down, yes, do it, no, don't do it. It was, we support the consideration of this because we are the people who levy the taxes. And, you know, while we certainly want all of the feedback we can get. It is up to the nine people on this meeting to distill all of that down and make the decision we feel is in the best interest of the district.
I I I agree with what you said, Director Gilmar, and I don't believe. Um, we would be able to put a referendum out just on, um. But first of all, the requirement before, when we did this, there was actually a legal requirement. That we had to have a referendum if we were going to do this. That's since been um changed. So we don't, we no longer are required to have a referendum, and I think to um put one out would be. Um, it was burdensome and cumbersome, I will tell you, when we had to do it by by statute. I think we'd have a very difficult time doing that, but I agree, there are other ways to measure the community's um. Interest in this.
Great. Thank you very much. I think that's all we have for budget and finance.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Under Community Relations, uh, Director, Director Holmes.
Yes, could you even like to make a motion to accept a donation from Home Depot to Whittier Elementary?
Okay, under Education, uh, Director Cruz. Did we lose Director Cruz?
Yeah, my internet wasn't working, internet went.
I think you're muted, Sarah.
Yes, sorry, my my uh intro, internet went out. Um, okay, are we, are we on education?
Yes, yep, we're rated education now.
All right, sorry, it's our education. So tonight, um, we will have a presentation from uh Mr. Don Haney, Principal of. Uh, Northeast Intermediate. I asked him um to give a presentation tonight similar to the one that Mr. Gilroy gave last month. I thought it was only appropriate. Appropriate for him to do so. So, Mr. Haney, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I I was asked to provide a presentation in regards to supervision. At Northeast, so I'll I'll make it uh brief. Uh, supervision is a critical component in regards to us maintaining a positive school culture. Uh, so the greatest amount of supervision that we have in place right now is occurring during our student arrival. Our student dismissal and in our transition between classes. Uh, we've been working with our students regularly to promote uh daily routines, including their lunchroom procedures. Uh, stairwell procedures and reinforcing positive behavior in the transition between our classrooms. Uh, one of the things that's been very helpful to us is the additional fifteen minutes uh in the teacher's schedule before and after school. That's that's really helped with our supervision. Um, our administration and our SRO are supervising the cafeteria. Uh, we are uh assigning our SRO and our hall monitors and even some of our teachers. Um, as students are in in the hallways, uh, to critical areas where issues have occurred to try and uh prevent anything from going on. Uh, we will be implementing the social emotional learning uh in the near future, which we hope will have an impact over on student behavior. And once our auditorium is is up and ready to go again, we will be uh reintroducing our school-wide positive behavior and support program. Uh, to really put it out to the kids again. So, a lot of positives and moving us in in a good direction there. Uh, the greatest need that we have uh is for personnel um in in regards to maintain adequate supervision. Is in the cafeteria, our main entrance, and during our uh during the class period, it's not in the transition. Uh, just, one of the biggest things was because of the change in the schedule, losing the. Uh, extralayer arts class, we lost all of our teacher duties at the intermediate school. So some examples of where that impacted us was uh in a cafeteria, we would generally have five to eight teachers supervising. Uh, now we only have two Aramark employees supervising between two hundred and three hundred students. So that's put the SRO and the school administrators in, instead of kind of monitoring. The cafeteria, we're now actively uh working with each student. Uh, in regards to our main entrance, previously, we always had a teacher assigned to the main entrance. That would supervise any visitors coming into the building and and people leaving. Uh, we no longer have that, and with the cut in our uh clerical positions. The, now we're we're down to the clerks that are remaining uh. Handling all the normal office duties, along with also trying to supervise the building entrance. And uh, finally, another area that we've been impacted is in regards to um the hallways during class time. We always had one teacher stationed outside of the bathrooms and usually another teacher in a different part of the hallway. Um, so currently, the best we can do is use our hall monitors and our SRO to walk around. Um, it's uh definitely helped us to some degree. Uh, it's better than not having anyone. Uh, of course, having the teachers prevented a lot more than what we're able to do now. So, uh, overall. Our teachers, our powers, uh, our support staff, administration, SRO, uh, they're really, everyone's doing a phenomenal job. I can't ask any more of them. In terms of keeping our building operating in a safe and orderly manner. Um, in spite of, you know, the loss of our duties, of course, re-implementing uh the supervision that we had in the past. Would would be ideal and would help us move towards uh a proactive stance as opposed to a reactive stance. And would provide for an even safer and more orderly environment. So, um, that's what I have, and I'm not sure if there's any questions or. But thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Haney, could you speak to um the fifth grade um transitioning into your building? Thing, how how that has, um, how how that is working out?
Okay, uh, so the fifth grade transition uh went very well. Overall, we were able to. Keep the fifth graders from interacting with the sixth, seventh, eighth graders. For the great majority of the time. There there's always going to be some, or you can't prevent everything. Uh, but we've had very little uh issues in regards to that. Certainly, I'm not aware of any issues. Where a fifth grader has been interacting with an eighth grader or anything like that, maybe fifth and sixth grade, but tha- that's all normal. Um, even on the buses, we haven't had many issues. Um, surprisingly enough, some issues are with the fifth graders creating problems with some of our older students. So. Uh, overall, I I have to say, I've heard nothing but positive from many of the parents. Uh, there's still some concerns here and there. Uh, about the changes, but but overall, um, you know, and and I'll put the great majority of that on our teachers. The the fifth grade teachers that we had coming in did a wonderful job of creating, you know, what we call that elementary experience. So, uh. Really, the the great majority of the credit should go to them uh for what they created. And and but overall, I've heard nothing but positives, and we continue, like everything else, we continue to monitor it and, you know, make revisions as as we see fit.
Okay. Okay. Does uh any of my colleagues have any questions for Mr. Mr. Haney um in terms of um? His presentation?
I have a question, just off his presentation, though, maybe to miss you or an administrator. Is there an update on the um security guard positions? I think maybe that would. Help some of the issues that were brought up this evening.
Uh, we did hire one security guard. I'm I'm gonna let Mr. Rucker uh tell us the date that that individual started or will be starting. And we are posting for another security guard that we have not filled yet. So, uh, Mr. Rucker, um, what is the status of the security guard?
Mr. Jones will be starting on Monday.
And we still need to hire another one, so we will be reposting.
Yes, ma'am.
Very much.
And where where will Mr. Jones be located or stationed?
Mr. Jones is gonna work uh from the admin building and be assigned to buildings in need. There's one, and we're gonna spread him where we feel the most need is for him.
That that will vary. Um, I, there's not going to be one location. It will be across the district. Depending on the situation, what's going on, and where we need that individual uh for the day.
He will not be in the ad building uh permanently or constantly. He will be out in the schools throughout the day. We just, it'll be determined which schools need. Need him the most at that time.
Mr. Rutgers, since we have an audience here, what kind of a background are you looking for for this open position?
I'm looking for, uh, I mean, the ones that we had apply were retired police officers. Uh, the one we hired is a retired police officer. Uh, I would look for somebody with a background in law enforcement or military or or some other way, some other. Schooling or method or anything like that that would make him good for this fit.
And that that'll be posted um tomorrow, you said, Superintendent McTernan?
Or that's posted now? If it's not already posted, um, uh, you know, when we weren't able to fill that position, um, I was, I directed them to repost, so. Um, I'm assuming it is posted again. If not, then it will it will be up tomorrow.
Mr. Haney, thank you. I I really appreciate hearing about about your school and and about the fifth graders, because I know, you know, we've all. Had our had our concerns, so we're hearing all good reports, so that's very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Haney, for the update. I really appreciate you taking the time out of your schedule to. Present this evening. Okay, moving on, um. We will have um a motion to approve um permission to attend, if any. Um, then we also have a motion to approve the twenty uh twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Uh, district school year calendar. Um, and then we will have a discussion motion to approve um ESL consultant con- contract. Um, Melanie Wolf from Greenberg, Mrs. Grayback, if you'd like to speak to that.
Certainly, Director Cruz, thank you. So Melanie Wolf Greenberg, um, she's an educational consultant, and she specializes in ESL policy and procedure. And she's also an instructional coach, and she. And she's going to be providing not only professional development to our ELD teachers she has in the past, and she would like to continue doing so in the future. She has worked with our program for the last five years and provided outstanding ELD PD to our both administration, staff, teachers, and non-ELD teachers. So she's proposing to provide specific consultation focusing on curriculum writing for ELD elementary and intermediate. We've also, we've begun that program last year, and we're trying to really make it a more detailed curriculum. So we've called her in as an expert in helping us wrapping that up. She will provide consultation as well on analyzing our access scores for our Ls and our state assessment scores, along with identifying needs assessment of our ELD program to address our English language learners. She successfully provided consultation and PD to the Scranton School District's ELD program, and she desires to continue her partnership for us during this next school year. So that's a little background about her and, and what her goal is and why we would like to incorporate her moving forward and continue that partnership.
Well, this contract, is it for one, what is the duration of it?
It will be for this year. It's, it's basically based on certain sessions that she has identified her availability to meeting with the teacher. So it's, it's not a weekly thing. It's more of an as needed during, during the year.
And what will be her, her compensation?
It should be on the contract that was submitted. Was there a contract submitted? Ms., Ms. Cosgrove submitted a contract. Was that in your board packet? I apologize. I thought that was already, she said that she sent it. Jenny, do you have that?
Yes, that was included in the board packet.
It was included. I don't have it up right now, but it was included. I could find that amount for you and get back to you on that. I don't have it pulled up right now.
I think, thank you, Mrs. Grayback.
You're welcome.
And then we will, then we will have a motion to approve Scranton High, Scranton High Show Choirs and Night Amplified Show Band Out of State Trip to Mechanicsville, Virginia. And that is all I have tonight for education. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Cruz. But before we lead into operations, I just, I just want to point out that we'd like to add two operations under new business. The new CDC guidance came out late Friday after we received our agenda and after we had that prepared regarding masking. So Attorney Audi, would you agree that we could add that as a, as a discussion, possible motion for our March 7th meeting at this point?
I would. You're not deliberating on it, and also it is, it is new material that can be considered an emergency situation under these circumstances.
Thank you. Okay, Director Hume, I'll turn it over to you. Oh, you're muted, Director Hume. You're muted.
I do it every time. Thank you. Just before I go ahead, I'd like to circle back to the Education Committee to Director Cruz. I was thrilled to learn just how fantastically well our show choir is doing in its out-of-state trips. We have had phenomenal results. I think, I can't, okay, never get old. My brain isn't remembering. There was a second place and a third place in our last two trips, and I can't remember which one went where, but they are phenomenal, and I hope at some point we get to hear them present their absolute showstoppers because this is it, and I wish them really good luck in Mechanicsville. Hopefully, they're not going to.
Thank you, Director.
Yeah.
No, I, no, I said, yeah, I think oftentimes we, we see them practicing when we, when we come to Scranton High for, for meetings, if I'm correct.
Oh, we did, but I saw somebody had posted a, on Facebook, a video of their performance where they came in second recently. And I tell you, Glee, you're hard out. Our kids are phenomenal and very proud of them. And I think that I hope, I hope as a district, we get to see them at some point. Okay, sorry, moving on, moving on. Sorry about, sorry, but it was very exciting. Okay, we have a discussion and a motion to approve the STEM Academy Design Budget Update as reviewed with the integration team. And I think this would be, I see Ethan lurking in the, is that you, Ethan?
Yes, yes, Director Hume. But just informed the school board that we did meet with the integration team last week and provided an update to the STEM budget that basically hones in on the final cost with receiving the furniture quotes that are going to be provided under a purchasing agreement that was approved by the board. I believe Keystone Purchasing Network and PEPM are two of the ones being looked at. Those final costs will be resolved tomorrow. We have a meeting with the lowest responsible furniture provider, and we just need to confirm a couple of the furniture items. That will be presented to the board at the meeting, and I can tell you that we have a line item of $280,000 for the furniture. We will be under that cost.
Well, fantastic. Thank you, Ethan. And we'll look forward to having a pleasant surprise next week at our meeting. Thank you. Anybody with any questions on that one? Okay, we will have a motion to approve the change order to Armstrong, which is EAC dash 001.
Director Hume, if I can, if I can just say so, that's, what that should be, there actually won't be a motion to approve. That should be a discussion on change orders, similar to the contracts in the budget and finance area. I think what we like to do is have a standing change order update. For our policy 831, the superintendent has the authority to approve change orders up to $5,000, and then they shall be reported to the board at the next scheduled meeting. So the, the change order in question is a $0 change order and it merely actually advances, it moves up the timeline of the scheduled work. Ethan, can you confirm that?
Yeah, so that's a order to the environmental abatement contractor, EAC. And there's, there's no cost with this change order due to the extended school year. We didn't have the documents revised at the time of bid for only this contractor, and we had them completing work before the students are out. So we had to modify his schedule by 10 days.
Okay, so that's fine. Thank you, Pat. I think that's a great step forward if we do have, as in the, as you said, the, the updates monthly. And then we, the final item for operations apart from the new business is the discussion and a motion to approve the updated West Granton Intermediate School budget.
So this budget we've reviewed that's in your packet with the integration team as well, and we've decided that there are three additional items that really need to be included as part of the renovation scope. One of them is to replace the carpet, which we've talked about, and we've, we've been through various iterations of the budget, but it's felt that this carpet needs to be replaced. It's duct taped as it is now, and it's also received some water damage recently, so it makes sense to include it. One of the additional items is to repair some joints in the masonry that's on the outside of the building that's allowing moisture to get in around the windows. And the final one is to bring up the fire alarm system throughout the building. Now, we had originally spoken with the city, and it's not a requirement that the building be brought up to a modernized system. However, we felt that this was just necessary for a safety standpoint for the students and community. And then additionally, on this budget, there are some yellow items listed there. We are providing those as alternates, so it allows the district some flexibility on the day bids are received to be able to choose these if the funding is in place and appropriate. So some, some of these alternates include replacement of the ceilings throughout the building, conversion of the planetarium area to the library, a sprinkler system, just as we did at Armstrong. If you remember, we had the sprinkler system listed as an alternate that on bid day was, was basically a bargain price, and the district chose to accept it, ala adding additional safety for that school. And those costs, again, they're, they're not in the budget, but they're included as alternates. And then we've, we've outlined the architect's fee to proceed with, at your, at your approval, proceed with documenting those alternate bids.
Okay, and do we have that budget document, the, the updated budget with the estimates, or we just wait for next week?
So you, you should have that in your board.
Okay, thank you. I'm trying, having trouble pulling that up. Hang on.
I can't, I can share it with you if you'd like.
That would be wonderful, Ethan. If you wouldn't mind, that would be much easier than my.
Okay. Give me one moment here.
Okay.
I'm getting there. I don't want to project the wrong one, so.
And while we're waiting, Director Cruz, I did find the, the contract from Melanie Wolf Greenberg in your packet. So if you need that shared as well, again, I can reshare, but it is in your packet, and it's broken down by consultation and elementary and intermediate curriculum work.
Okay, so can everybody see the budget on your screen?
If you could make it as teeny. That's a bit, yeah.
All right.
Enlarge your screen a bit or.
So as you recall, we originally had the option to budget. That remains in this column here. And now we have option two plus budget with select upgrades. Select upgrades are these tan colored items here. So the carpeting is listed here with $560,000. The vertical CMU control joint is here, $40,000, and that's to be completed with the window repairs. And the final one is the building-wide fire alarm system replacement here for $552,948. So those costs are basically included on this line item here. So the original previous budget was 4.1 million, and it's now 5.2 million. Then we've outlined these yellow items as the, the choices that allow flexibility on bid day to at least consider them. Because if you didn't document them now and have this option, you'd never be able to go back and, and implement these options. So they're listed here. They can potentially be included in the project. Again, that's the building-wide sprinkler system. There's some lighting replacements, conversion of the planetarium area to an art classroom, and to replace the ceilings throughout the building. So those total up to $3.9 million of alternates.
Okay, all right. When do we expect the bids to be in, Ethan? Do we have any?
We're actually in the design process of this through August. This will be issued for bidding till September, so there's, there's a lot of time in the process to review the budgets and keep, keep the board updated at this point.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you very much indeed. I think that makes a great deal of sense. If we can't have the deluxe Cadillac, we don't have to have the Volkswagen. We'll go somewhere in the middle for the Prius. I think it's well done. Thank you very much, Ethan.
Thank you, directors.
Anyone with any comments on that? I think you're, I think you get a little, you get to say goodbye, Ethan, I think.
All right. Thank you very much for having me.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ethan.
Now, Director Yanni, the, I think you said you wanted to have a discussion on masking?
Yes, I, I mean, as we all know, new guidance did come out from the CDC. So I think we need to discuss whether we want to add a motion to our agenda for March 7th to follow that CDC guidance. So where do we stand right now? We, we stand that it needs to be voted upon because right now we're fully masked. Is that correct?
That's, that's correct. Our health and safety plan would need to change to reflect that we would be following CDC guidelines if that's what the board chooses moving forward. And I think everyone on the board received that from me Friday night, but basically CDC changed its school guidance, and based on the new county metrics, it is recommending universal school masking only in communities with high level of diseases. For all others, it would be optional. So if the board chooses to continue, and I think all along that's what we've been doing, is following CDC and DOH. So if we continue on that path, then the, the health and safety plan would have to reflect the, basically what I just stated.
So, so we would need a motion to revise the health and safety plan.
That is correct.
To follow the CDC guidance regarding masking.
Correct.
So I guess that's what I'm looking for input from my colleagues on the board. Do we, do we want to add that motion to our March 7th meeting?
I'm in favor of it. I think it's, you know, I'm okay with going optional as long as the numbers are where the CDC wants them to be. So that's my thought on it.
My, my, I, I agree with Director McAndrew. My only recommendation would be that we, we're coming, we're coming now to having a better handle on the, on the pandemic. I'm just wondering whether we should, rather than voting on a motion every time they change, we simply update the health and safety plan to say that we will follow the guidelines of the CDC and give the superintendent, when the, without having to wait for a separate board motion, that should the county, you know, should, should the CDC guidelines call for masking, the superintendent has the authority to reintroduce it if needed. I don't think it's going to happen, but if we should get to that situation, that would save the board having to vote on a motion each time the CDC guidelines changed. How do people feel about that?
I have a question. Are we, I, just to make sure that we're still in the clear, are we supposed to just be adding this to the agenda? Are we allowed to deliberate this right now, being as it wasn't on the agenda, John? Or are we just supposed to be deciding if we want to add it to the next meeting?
I thought we could discuss.
We can have a discussion. We're not necess, we're deliberating next week because we'll, we'll have a vote next week.
Thank you.
I'm just saying, not, not pro or con, but I'm just saying, is it, is it simpler to give us a more flexible motion so that we don't, so that we, we do that? I've been, unless people are happy coming back and voting on it each time guidelines change, that's something for my colleagues to discuss.
I think a motion to, to follow the CDC guidance is appropriate. I'm a little bit glad that the timing of our meeting buys us a bit of a delay here rather than, you know, just one day, yes, and the next day, no. But, you know, I, as we've said at previous meetings, we've committed to following the CDC guidance. So I think it is appropriate in this, at this juncture as well.
And students always have the option to wear masks. So, I mean, any individual person, if we give, you know, a student can always wear one. We're not telling them they can't, so.
I do feel that we, we've stood behind the CDC guidelines, and I, I think it's best that we stay within those guidelines. So I, I would like to see that motion then be added to that agenda.
I agree.
Okay, thanks. This is where we can add that for next week, okay? Thank you.
Personnel, Director McAndrew.
Sure. So we're going to start off with a discussion of the personnel report.
Yeah, we, I had been asked to add this to, to the discussion of the possibility of splitting up the personnel report. I know Mr. Audi had given the board some options. So I think at this time, I'm looking for direction as to what exactly the board would like with the personnel report. And if they do want to split it up, how would they like that to happen?
Jenny, can you briefly speak about past practice and maybe what you see as maybe potentially best practice moving forward? Uh, Jenny, can you briefly speak about past practice and maybe what you see as maybe potentially best practice moving forward?
Sure, um, I recall we used to separate them into leaves of absences, appointments, assignments, retirements. So there would be probably four or five different motions, um, under personnel. My thing is retirements, leaves of absences, resignations. If they were to all be still on one, that may help. And if you were to just separate the assignments and appointments, rather than have five different. They, they used to be broken down into superintendent's report, um, numbers. So each report would have a, uh, their own number and it would be a superintendent's report because the superintendent was making the resume, the recommendation. So I did look around at other districts to see what they do, John, you can help me out here, I don't think Abington does that. I think they all, they have it on one report, like we've been doing, I don't know, but.
I, I think the difference, um, if I may, is, you know, when you have a smaller district, there's not as many um, actions and, and varied actions on a particular report. And I think what's, what's happened in this district is there's so many varied actions that someone may object to one or two of them, um, yet have no problem with the others. And the problem then becomes for the director, how do you handle that? I like your idea, um, of, you know, having the retirements and the things that really, you, you, we, you know, you can't vote no to. Um, uh, put it, put those all together and then just have the appointments and assignments, um, separate. Uh, I think that's a great idea.
But wouldn't it be so if you have an appointment and you're, for some reason, you're not happy with one of the appointment, you vote no to that whole section, then that could affect five, ten, fifteen, even more, you know, people on the list. To me, uh, I always like just, if I have an, an issue with the situation or a certain appointment, to make a motion to pull that out and vote on it separately.
I, in, Director McCandry, I don't think there's a, a rule that prohibits that. That's not been the practice that we've had in the recent past, but that doesn't mean that cannot be the practice in the, in the future.
I, could I just say that I, um, I find that when we get down to as a board, past, th- th- this is Scranton, there's a history in this of boards and employments and appointments and things. I, I feel uncomfortable and certainly from a personal matter as myself as a director, will not single out, um, an individual from an appointment I will either vote for. If I feel very, very strongly, I'll vote against the report. Uh, if I don't feel very strongly, I'll hold my nose and vote for the report. But we have such a history, not this board, not the previous board and possibly not even the board before that, but there is such a history in this district of board members and appointments to paid positions in the district being conflated, muddled, and sometimes, uh, not perhaps as freshly smelling as they should be. I would feel very uncomfortable with the board making individual recommendations on individual appointments of individual people to individual positions. That's just me, I, as a director will, as I say, follow my gut, follow the guidelines as we go. If I really can't stomach having someone in a position, I'll vote against that part of the report. However, having said that, I do like the idea of separating the report out into the two parts. Um, but I think we need to be very careful, um, about, um, appointments to paid positions in this district as a board. If we don't trust our administration to make good recommendations, then we can reject them in total.
Mr. Audi, so.
My feeling.
If we vote, say, there's ten people on this one section, if we vote no to the whole section because it's one position we're not comfortable with, what happens to the other nine people when, or actually the whole ten people? When like, do they show up to work the next day, you know, especially if they already started and stuff like that? Cause I know a lot of people already start before we even, we even vote on it. So to me, that's just, I mean, if I was watching, I like, I would wake up and say, am I supposed to go to work? Cause I just got to go to Noah, so what would be?
Well, you're right, especially if there's a majority of the board members that do that. Um, you know, that would, that would, it could create havoc because there are uh, many situations where there's a retroactive approval of, uh, an assignment. So, uh, that could be a problem, you, that, that, that's a valid point.
That, that's one of my, that's one of my concerns right now is, um, as you know, we're filling teachers constantly. So if, and we're starting them before, as past practice and the board, uh, policy, we're starting them before they actually are voted. So if we say no, I mean, let's think about what we had last month, we had three pages of personnel. So at, all in one document where the, you know, the board was concerned, we say no to one, then it's the whole thing. So I think, you know, as I listen to this, I usually try to give my opinion. I think it, it's coming to the point where, you know, I think it, if the board has a problem with an individual hire, um, then I think there, you know, the best practice would be to, to, to take that separately and vote on it. I, I don't know how else we do that without affecting, like you just said, Director McCandry. If we have ten hires and not, and all ten of them started, all of the teachers started, and you vote that down, then what, I have ten classrooms without a teacher?
Right.
How, how do we do that?
If I, briefly, I know we had this conversation last time, when we, there was an issue with the last personnel report, that there were some concerns and then, um, some thoughts changed afterwards. And so with proper process, that would be addressed before the vote. So if board directors are saying there's an, a majority issue with one direct, one position, that would then be discussed prior to the, the vote of the personnel report, so a remedy could be found. Katie, you speak on this much better than I, so go ahead.
I, I think to Rose's earlier point, I, I think this is, this is about the process and this is about trusting the administration. I think it is going to be a very rare instance wh- wh- where we have a personnel report before us that a majority of the board would have a concern over one individual. I think there could be times when maybe one of us has a, a personal relationship or a prior professional dealing with someone that we think, you know, I, I'm not, I, I'm just not comfortable moving forward here, but there would be no reason for me to bar this person from employment. I think that's where we get into that murky and difficult area of separating this, the personnel, not, not separating it into sections. I, I personally, not to get off on a tangent, would like to see some templates of these things before making any final decision. I think talking about this is a little bit difficult, I'd love to see two or three examples. You know, here's option A, here's option B, here's option C. We like A, or we'd like the top of A and the bottom of C. You know, I think we, we, I would feel a little more comfortable making that decision, seeing it in front of me and I, Jenny is nodding her head.
Yeah.
So I'm sure that's something we can do, but I, I think the, the broad issue here, as Catherine said, is about that process and is about the, the work that goes into the interview process, the recommendation process. And to Rose's point, we do have to trust our administration. That doesn't mean that we're not ever going to have hesitation about an individual candidate, but I think that's where that anonymity and the respect of, and the, the process of nine people make a decision and when that decision is made, we move forward together. Each of us has to do what we feel is the best at the moment, but I think it's going to be a very rare instance where there's one candidate that five or six or seven or nine of us say, no, we don't want this person. So I, I, I feel like we could be, I don't know that we have to make a plan for that today. I think we can deal with that on a case by case issue as it comes forward. But in terms of dividing this report, I, I think that's a very reasonable proposition.
Well, I mean, I'll be honest, I have a, an issue and, and I understand the times we're in. I, I have an issue with the retroactive approval, however, Missy, I certainly understand where we're at in today's times. Going back fifteen years ago, we had many subs, or even ten years ago, we had subs. And it was much easier to fill positions because I feel strongly that people should, the time where that's very difficult today, you know, just filling spots and not having subs and leaving classrooms empty. So I think in today's world right now, until maybe we get back to, uh, an era where there's a lot more people, you know, subbing and things, you know, I, I guess we have to do the retroactive approval, even though I, like I said, I, I have an issue with it. Um, and, and the other thing too is, you know, people leaving other districts to come to Scranton, which does happen. You know, you don't want to leave your position or put in your resignation till your board approved. And the fact that the last, um, list was three months worth of hirings, that seems a little out of lineup, I mean, I don't underst, I don't understand why we didn't have others monthly and why there was such a large report. I mean, lumping the leave of absences and resignations and retirements together probably makes sense because you can't tell somebody they can't retire, or they can't, you know, take a leave of absence if, you know, they're ill or whatever. But as far as the hirings, I do like Katie's idea of maybe getting some ideas of what some other districts do, but hiring eighty-five people in one lump, um, with, with all different categories was, I think, a little uncomfortable for me.
To me too, it's like just a personal thing, it's transparency to the public, it's like, I want them to know why I'm voting no to this section. So even if I do, on the question say, why I'm voting no, I don't want it to affect every, you know, other nine, ten people. So to me, it's, I always want the public to know why I'm voting no, and if I just vote no to a section and not say anything or not try to pull one out, I, I think it's gonna get like a transparency thing.
I think though, there, there is also the question of professionalism and respect for the individual. I, I, you know, I would, I would certainly think if your concerns about an individual rose to the level that they had to be shouted in a public forum, you might bring that back to the administration and, and make, make the appropriate individuals aware of that. You know, I'm, I'm talking about an instance where you say, you know, I just, I'm, you know, that, he was my math teacher ten years ago and I didn't like him, I, you know? That's a silly example, but I, I think we have to be very careful about calling those kinds of things out in a public forum, John, if I'm off mark there, please let me know.
No, I mean, I certainly, a board director is certainly entitled to vote no and say, I'm voting no to this specific person, that's their job. Um, I, I have no problem with that, obviously, um, the reasons that you're voting no, I would be very, you know, I'd be very careful about what I would say in public. Um, but if you're good, if you're gonna say no, um, I think that's fine. I mean, I don't see any reason where a board member can't vote no on anything, that's, that's part of their job. But I do agree, I do agree that you should be careful about what you would say about a particular person, obviously.
I agree.
So Mrs. Orr, would you then be amicable to maybe coming up with a couple templates for us? And I think we could, could at least review that and then see if we need to discuss it further.
Sure, I, I mean, I can send what we used to use, I think, um, there's some, there's some administrators that are with us now that would remember the reports that we used to vote on. And, you know, teachers were separate from the administrators, they all had their own number. You know, superintendent's report number thirteen twelve, I wanna, you know? And it would be assignments and appointments. The next one would be the professional appointments. The next one would be leaves and app, leaves of absences and so forth, so. But I can, I can send you all examples of what, what we did in the past and it worked well.
I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you. Director McCandry, did you want to continue?
Does anybody else have anything? We're good? So we have a motion to approve a settlement agreement and then we have a motion to approve the personnel report. That's it.
Um, Director Fox, policy?
Yes, we'll have a motion to approve first read, um, policy eight three two educational equity. We will have, um, currently we'll have a discussion and then have a motion next week for the STEM, uh, STEM, if I could speak tonight, sorry, STEM Academy policy, um, Ms. Miller, are you speaking to that?
Yes, so I put a policy in front of the board for the STEM academic policy, which is in regards to the eligibility of students who are enrolled within the STEM Academy, wherever they would be able to participate in co-curricular activities, after-school activities, both social and academic, as well as PIA double A athletics, and that's all outlined within the policy. Um, do you need me to go into any detail or?
Uh, Ms. Miller, I think you should just explain, uh, again, I did talk about it publicly, but I think you should explain seventh and eighth grade students will be attributed back. Uh, just a general overview so that everybody hears where we're at when they get to ninth grade. They have one time to choose if they're from West Side, so I don't want to speak for you, but.
Yes, okay, so, uh, intermediate students who are accepted and enrolled within the STEM Academy um, would be eligible to participate in all co-curricular, PIA double A athletics, um, academic and social activities at their home school. And for state reporting purposes, um, all achievement scores would be attributed back to their home school. Once a student who's enrolled in the STEM Academy enters ninth grade, which wouldn't begin until the school year twenty-three, twenty-four, um, any student whose home school is West Scranton High School would be given a one-time opportunity to choose which high school they wish to participate in those activities for. Um, this would only be for students whose home school would be West Scranton. Students whose home school is Scranton High School would remain as participating at Scranton High School. Okay, but our West Scranton students who would be enrolled in the program would get that one-time opportunity to either stay participating in after-school co-curricular activities, extracurricular, PIA double A sports, social and academic activities at Scranton High School, or if they would like to participate, um, at Scranton High School where they would be taking their classes. And that would be a one-time, um, opportunity that they would then be locked into for their high school career, um, nine through twelve. Um, unless, uh, they're removed from the program or leave the program and return back to West Scranton High School.
Yes, and again, one of the things that, um, I know the principal of West Scranton High School had said that, uh, does that mean all of the scores, again, would be attributed to Scranton High School if he loses those students? And as Ms. Miller already stated, for state reporting purposes, so that's your PSSAs, that's your keystones, the, all of those scores are attributed back to your home res, of residence. So it would be attributed back to West Scranton. So even if a ninth grade student who is from West Side, lives in West Side, chooses to go to Scranton, to the STEM Academy, chooses to participate in the academic programs at Scranton, their state reporting requirements will go back to their home school of residence.
Yes.
And I just want to say, I, I really appreciate the work, Mrs. Miller, that you put into that and Superintendent McTaren into looking into that option and the research that went into it. Because I think now West Granton students, um, that may have been hesitant because they didn't want to be completely separated from their friends, I mean, they're still doing their summer activities, doing their summer things with those, that group of friends. They can still keep those, they can make the new friends at Scranton, so I think it's a win-win, so thank you for that.
Sure.
Can I just ask one question? I was reviewing the policy and one thing kind of popped out at me and I wasn't sure if it was clearly addressed. And the one thing was, let's just say, because you were saying something, or I was reading the policy and there was something about if they weren't able to maintain due to academics in the STEAM program and they went back to West, but they were on the football team at Scranton because they chose that, what would happen? So you know.
My, my.
Talking futuristically.
Yeah, so my understanding and Ms. Miller, correct me if I'm wrong, they would be, go back to West Granton and they would participate in West Granton athletics, that is correct?
Correct, okay.
So they all, yes.
Sure, I got that, okay.
So if they're dismissed from the program at all for, for those reasons, academic reasons, they go back to the, their home school of residence and they participate in the PIA double A programs within that school?
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I, I see, Director Hume has her hand up. Did you have your hand up, Director Hume?
No, I'm sorry, did I hit the wrong thing?
Yeah, you just have your little hand up. It's okay.
Okay, um, does anyone else have any further questions on that? Okay, so then we will have a motion to approve second read six two six procurement procedure attachment. Um, and then also the agenda says first read zero zero six BOG, but this would be a second read because first read was last meeting. Um, if I can confirm that, um, is that okay? Do we just need an adjustment?
Yeah, sorry about that, that was my. Yeah, sorry about that. That was my copy.
That's okay. And then to add to that, I believe we need to add second read for policy 122 to the agenda also. I don't believe it's on the posted agenda.
I, I think I did change it.
There, there is the 122 extracurricular. It's just, it's just says first read for the public notice of board meetings and 122. So that just needs to read second read.
It is, it's on the agenda, the updated one that we received. I don't think it's on the one that's in Board Docs. So it's probably been posted publicly, but I think Board Doc still has the one without this.
Thank you for clarification. That is all for me.
Thank you, Director Fox. Special education, Director Chesek.
Under special education, we will have a motion to approve settlement agreement, if any. And that's everything.
Thank you. And then vendor relations, Director Clary.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion to approve the STEM Academy furniture purchase.
I, I can speak to that. I, I believe Ethan covered it pretty well when we spoke about the, the updated STEM budget. Obviously this is the furniture that's necessary. It's included within the budget for the STEM program. And with a line item of $280,000, as Ethan noted, we anticipate coming in under that amount. And it will be purchased either with, I believe he said KPN, but it's actually Pepham or Sourcewell, depending on which vendor. Both are approved cooperative purchasing agreements.
Thank you, Mr. Laughlin.
Okay. I think we did fairly well this evening. Is there anything else that anybody wants to comment on for the greater good? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.